Tenakatu Katoa, salam aleikum. Welcome to this extraordinary meeting of the Dunedin City Council. Our prayer today will be led by Reverend Wayne Takawa from the university. Kyurang, Reverend.
Just to give you all a bit of context on this prayer. A few years ago, the Quran was translated into Te Reo Maori. It was brought to Tsuranga Wa Waiwai Marai and the first Quran in Te Reo Maori was presented to the Maori king. I'm one of his chaplains and he asked me to bless it along with the Ayman from the mosque in Auckland. The Ayman prayed the Quran in Te Reo Maori and I prayed my prayer and our prayers were exactly the same. Later that year, we had the memorial service for Nausa Mandela at Tsuranga Wa Waiwai Marai. And the Ayman and I both prayed and our prayers were exactly the same. And so this is our prayer. In the name of Allah, the most gracious, the most merciful. All praise and thanks are Allah's. The Lord of the Alamein, mankind, Jinn and all that exists. The most gracious, the most merciful. The only owner and the only ruling judge of the day of recompense, the day of resurrection. You alone we worship and you alone we ask for help. For each and everything, guide us to the straight way, the path of the faith, all by your grace. Amen.
Now councillors, I called this meeting, as you can deduce from the agenda paper, to do two things. Firstly, for council to formally express its feelings about the atrocities in Christchurch last Friday. And secondly, to give councillors individually the opportunity to speak publicly about their feelings and about the tragedy. However, to begin, I suggest we have a few moments' silence. And I think that 50 seconds would be appropriate. Now, as this is a formal meeting of the council, we need to follow process. So as you know, I prepared a resolution for consideration really as a starter. That, I have followed up subsequent to some advice from a range of sources. It has been amended and I've recirculated that. And that will be what we start with anyway. I'm more than willing to entertain amendments and additions, as I said. So if that could go up on the screen and you should all have it in your emails anyway. Could I have a second for that motion? Councillor Hawkins, thank you. So, in speaking to this motion, and I will speak to the various aspects of it in no particular order. First, a message to our Muslim brothers and sisters. You are not a separate group of outsiders in our community. You are part of us. We are, we all are. And this attack on you, while you bore the horrific brunt of it, is an attack on our community. On all of us. And while the wider non-Muslim community did not suffer the attack and cannot feel the pain and the loss and the hurt that you do, nevertheless, we are stricken to the core by this horror. And we stand with you in solidarity and araha. It is those who are left bereft or in many cases of loved ones, torn from them, who have to be strong. And we can help by offering our support, our fellow feeling and our assurance that you are us. As priceless a part of our community, as every other person and family. We can also assure you that our community is overwhelmingly safe, although I acknowledge that belief has been shaken to the core in all of us. Dunedin, and indeed New Zealand, is a nation of immigrants. This city was built by people from all over the world looking for somewhere better or safer to raise families and do business. Many of our Muslim brothers and sisters have only been here a short while. Why would we expect them to understand our nation's journey towards accepting the values of diversity, the value of difference? Why would they necessarily appreciate that this city has a tradition of welcoming strangers? So I say to our Muslim brothers and sisters, you are as much a part of us, of our community, as any other group. We are one community, albeit with different customs, different cultures and different backgrounds. If we don't stand with each other, who will be next? I'm outraged that an outsider to this community could come amongst us and not only attack and kill our people, but attack the very basis of who we are as a community. I note that the attacker apparently originally had the mosque here in Dunedin as his target. Did he choose here because we are inclusive? No matter what reasons, grievances or justifications are imagined, there is nothing at all admirable and certainly nothing brave about shooting innocent, defenceless men and women and children. It is craven. It is the act of the spineless and the weak. I'm very proud of our community's support for our Muslim folk over the past few days, just as I'm proud of the fact that our community entreated the council and the government to designate Dunedin as a refugee resettlement centre and a home to Syrian ex-refugees only a few years ago. I'm proud of our manaakitanga, of the ongoing support of our community that our community has given and continues to give those ex-refugees. Well, now it's needed more than ever. In this time of doubt, insecurity and anguish, our community must redouble its efforts to reassure our Muslim brothers and sisters that we are with them totally. We will face this trauma together. Part of the way we do that is to say no to even the slightest hint of racial and cultural abuse. Brushing aside and ignoring such apparently minor acts as racist insults and go-home messages out of car windows and pulling on headscarves, treating such acts as insignificant only serves to normalise them. Indeed, such unchallenged, such attitudes and behaviour escalate and the small cells of social infection can grow into monstrous expressions of hate. Even lent apparent respectability as they were in Nazi Germany and today's United States. Finally, I want to address the fact that the perpetrator of these vile deeds lived in Dunedin for a short while. So what? He came from elsewhere, but more importantly, his attitudes and beliefs are utterly antithetical to the ethos of this city. This community, I am proud of the overwhelmingly welcoming, inclusive nature of our city. And the actions of one lone sick individual who seemed to choose this place because of our inclusiveness cannot be allowed to tarnish who we are and how we are seen by the world. So I move this resolution as an expression by this council of solidarity, care and love for our Muslim brothers and sisters and as an utter rejection of the toxic hateful attitudes that led to this atrocity. Now can I invite other speakers? Councillor Hawkins.
Attenakua, your worship. Salam aleikum and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to this as difficult as it is to articulate what it is that one says in times like this. Friday was a lot to take in, from hope to horror. At lunchtime, I stood in the octagon while high school students poured in because all who had gone before them had failed to keep them safe. We've failed to keep them safe from an unstable climate future. It went from hope to horror though when a couple of hours later, just a couple of hours up the road, we saw our Muslim brothers and sisters attacked during Friday prayers. We had failed to keep them safe from the dangers of white supremacy. And worse than failing to keep them safe, the powers of the state had invested so much of their energy into investigating them as a community for signs of extremism. They apparently had none left to look for violent white nationalists appointed in their direction. A lot of the response around the country has been one of shock. This isn't New Zealand. This isn't us. This is the end of our innocence. This is the start of a dark chapter. And also that we shouldn't let this change our way of life because that way he wins. But sadly, this is us. And we have to change what we are doing as a society because our current environment is one that enables and empowers such extremism to exist in the first place. I've heard people talking about how this has brought out the very worst. This is an example of the very worst and the very best of our community. And yes, the outpouring of love and support that has been shown to our Muslim brothers and sisters has been as remarkable as it has been necessary. But that stuff's easy. Unless we also commit to fixing the causes of these problems, then it's meaningless. All of us, as individuals and as institutions, have to come to terms with this and make more of a conscious effort to dismantle the power structure of white supremacy. That means our police and our justice system addressing their issues with systemic racism. Where our Maori and Pacificifano are more likely to be stopped by police, far more likely to get arrested and then far more likely, if convicted, to serve harsher sentences. That means our newspapers and our media companies reconsidering their editorial policies, publishing letters, columns and opinion pieces that stoke the fear of migrants and fan the flames of Islamophobia. That means all of us refusing to sit around while people make jokes about Black Lives Matter and doing nothing to call people out for their casual racism because words matter. I'm not saying this is easy. This is difficult and awkward and uncomfortable. But it's also critical and it's urgent if we're to address what we have before us. Friday was a nightmare for our Muslim community and it's right that they are first and foremost in our thoughts at this time. But the reverberations of this go far wider than that. I heard it described yesterday as an earthquake. That the epicentre is our Muslimfano, but the shockwaves are felt throughout our ethnic communities because they also know what it's like to be at the pointy end of this stuff. They know that any of them could be next if we don't make a more urgent effort to fix it. Last year, a couple of high-profile Canadian hate mongers came to New Zealand and a bunch of middle-class white people argued amongst themselves about whether freedom of speech should trump protection for its targets. If we all just debated politely in the public square, they argued racism would give up and run away with its tail between its legs. Our impacted communities are not and should not be a punching bag for lightweight liberal intelligentsia. They are human beings that need our ongoing support. So I welcome this. I welcome this resolution and the zero tolerance message within it. But more importantly, I welcome and encourage the commitment of my colleagues to help addressing the real problems that we are facing in the work that we do and to lead by example in our community. The two events on Friday are intrinsically linked, I think, as the impacts of a change in climate start to kick in. As the struggle for access to diminishing resources starts to ramp up, it's all too easy for humanity to turn on itself in even more divisive ways. Building stronger, more inclusive and more tolerant communities are critical to finding the collective solutions we need to address these challenges, social and environmental, as well as to surviving those which we don't fix in time. Now is not the time to fall into an isolationist trap. I gave it serious thought as to whether to speak to this motion at all. What people in my position of privilege at the moment should be doing is listening. Listening to our Muslim communities, listening to our Maori, Pacific and ethnic communities and especially their women. But it's also not fair to expect our impacted communities to do all of the heavy lifting. Things won't change without those of us with privilege actively giving some of that up so that others can have access to justice. What I've seen in this community and around the country on Friday and since gives me hope that we can.
Romali. Thank you, your worship. I don't think anybody will... My daughter said to me, she was born before 9/11, that in America people could always say where they were on 9/11. And she said, "I know exactly where I was on Friday and I will remember that for the rest of my life." These moments, they come out of the blue and they're so horrible that you really can't comprehend them. And you can always hope that something good might come out of it. And I think there has been one good thing that has come out of it. And that is that many New Zealanders have had a chance to say something which they had meant to say, but sadly it never got around to saying, which was to the Muslim brothers and sisters, "To our fellow Kiwis, we love you." And I'm sorry that it took us that long to say it, but we're here, we've said it. But this good must now be followed by action. Another thing that happened near me a few years back was I was living in Connecticut when the Sandy Hook massacre occurred. And a young boy went into a kindergarten and killed children with an automatic gun. And someone said to me, "Well, this will change it." And I said, "No, not in this country it won't. It will not change in America" and it didn't. But we are facing now the same question ourselves. And I hope that the government moves with speed and effectively adopts the Australian model. We don't need these guns to pursue the other things that you might use them for. And I also want to touch on the environment that created the killer. The casual use of racism and politics. And our country is better than most, but we're not immune to it. Don Brash did it at Orirua. But I really want to draw attention and I didn't know if I should today or not, but I'm going to it. And that's the Fraser Anning in Australia. The words of the Australian senator Fraser Anning immediately after the Christchurch shooting marked the lowest point in Australian hate-based politics. If they remain unchallenged in the Australian senate, then that organisation must accept that through its inaction, it is by extension condoning his evil deeds. It is not normal practice for someone to comment on the internal activities of another country's government. But in this case, Mr. Anning's words were directed towards this country, my country, the countries of my brothers and sisters. I cannot stand by and not comment on his hateful words. I therefore ask the senator Anning resign and in the event that he doesn't, I implore the Australian parliament to reinstate the power to expel a member and then to proceed to remove him. Thank you.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you, your worship. These were mothers and fathers, wives and husbands, daughters and sons, neighbours and workmates. The harrowing details that have come out since the atrocity on Friday have been truly difficult to process. For me, it was the photo of the children who were killed and the stories of those who had just arrived from worn-torn countries that finally I was forced to tears. And I was very aware of the ripples for such, so far and wide. But the focus has to be on the community who are suffering. I will talk more about that in a moment. I want to talk about those ripples to begin with and just give voice to some of the messages that I'm aware of. There was one last night read out at the launch of the Dunedin Book Festival, Writers and Readers Festival. And I just want to quote from it. It's from the UNESCO Creative Cities Network. And they say, "When one city or nation suffers from violence fuelled by racism and the deliberate targeting of the Muslim community, we all suffer. We must not suffer in silence. We stand together to fight violence and build peace through all art forms and culture." On Friday night, in the middle of the night, I had a message from South Georgia. A woman who I had met in Shanghai. And she said, "I'd like to express my deepest condolences and sympathy to you and to everyone who was affected by this terrible attack. My thoughts and prayers are with you." And more messages from City of Literature people. One from Reykjavik in Iceland, "My thoughts have been and are with you and the people of New Zealand. There are no words to describe how horrific this is. I followed in awe the wonderful solidarity and response in your communities and a strong message of love and hope your prime minister sends out." And from Lillehammer in Norway, "Just a short message from the other side of the globe to tell you how absolutely gutted we feel about what has just happened in New Zealand. In Norway, we experienced the same thing in 2011. It is an horrendous thing to have happen in open, trusting societies like ours. Just wanted to let you know that we feel your pain." I want to just reflect on a couple of things and yet you probably appreciate, I'm finding my thoughts are sort of jumbled and I've had difficulty in struggling with what to say today. But here goes. So I'm feeling a lot of things right now and believe this is the time for discussion and for action and of movement together towards a cultural and political landscape where the violence enacted on Friday is truly inconceivable. For all of us standing with those who have just lost loved ones and others who are in spaces of immense pain and vulnerability, this journey is beginning and will only sink deeper. Our responsibility is to hold that space for them at this time. There is a measure of naivety and deep denial that in my privilege I have also sustained. There is nowhere to go in the realisation of what our inaction has done. This while the voices and experience of those suffering violence in our communities due to their faith, ethnicity, culture, gender, sexuality were invalidated or deprioritised. And in my eyes, this complicity is perhaps of the biggest conversations we need to have as a nation. At an interfaith community dinner for World Faith Harmony Day, about a month ago, I gave a speech for the city. And in it, I talked in detail about the long history of this city with its religious diversity and tolerance. And I said how proud I was of that. And I talked about the genesis of the Interfaith Council, which was after the 9/11 attacks. And at the very end, I said, "In a world where the politics of belief are often used to try and push us apart, all of our efforts to promote interfaith harmony have never been more important." I still believe we are a city of tolerance and diversity. But it troubles me, and I want to be very real about this, that I can cite you several occasions in the last couple of weeks and since Friday when I have heard comments and I have heard of frightened people that were not directly associated with this event. They were not directly affected and it wasn't their family and they weren't in Christchurch. But they have suffered racial slurs. People have said the most inappropriate things. And that's what makes me so angry at this time. And I've made a personal commitment and I would encourage you all to do the same, that we call this out when it happens. It's the small gestures also that will make the difference. The warm smile to a woman in the supermarket who's wearing a hijab. A gentle comment and a compassionate approach. I want to just take this opportunity in what is Race Relations Week to just remind ourselves that we do welcome and celebrate diversity. And we've always been open to many cultures and this will continue to be a cornerstone of who we are. And I want to make a reassurance to the international students in our community and their parents who are so far away, who are fretting and afraid that we will do our utmost to keep their children safe. And I want to reassure the visitors to our city that this is still a safe city, a welcoming city. And I want to finally finish with, I guess it's my favourite Maori proverb and you'll know it well. But it brings us back to the centre of this, of what we should be thinking about, our focus. What is the most important thing in the world? It is the people. It is the people. It is the people.
Councillor New.
Thank you, your worship. Salam aleikum. I too was lucky enough to be in the octagon at lunchtime celebrating our children showing some leadership. I have absolute confidence that their generation are going to get this a damn sight more than we have. But it's up to us as parents, as teachers, as leaders to do exactly that. I was sitting at home watching the blow-by-blow on the telly with my family. And I was watching our leader Jacinda Ardern and started to see her lip quiver and a bit of tearing up. I said, "Hold it together, girl. You can do this. You got this." Then I realised I was bawling my eyes out. What we did see from our leader was empathy, compassion and a healthy dose of steady resolve. I was watching it on the telly and I was also communicating with a friend in Christchurch whose child was in lockdown. Her child's nine years old, same age as my boy. She didn't know where he was. We didn't know how many shooters there were. And there were mixed reports about where the shooters were and how many and what they were doing. We sat and we watched and I've got to say, the relief was absolutely palpable when that friend of mine found that their child was okay and... friend of mine found that their child was okay and released from that school. The thoughts of what that child was going through that whole time just doesn't bear thinking about. I didn't know what else to do. I'd never been near a mosque in my life and it was ignorance that had kept me away. But I took my family down to Alhuda Mosque and took some flowers. I didn't know what sort of person did that, but I realised it was us. I got there and I was welcomed and hugged by a Muslim man who came up to me, gave me a big hug and just said, "Thank you, Kiwi. Thank you." I didn't know him from a bar of soap and he didn't know me. He then held out a cellphone with a photo of what may have been a friend or a family member. And that person was with two young children. And I thought, "Oh God, that guy's died." I went home and thought about it and thought, "All three of them probably died." Christian, Muslim, Jew, atheist, it didn't matter. As councillor Gary said, these were Kiwi mums and dads, brothers and sisters, aunties and uncles and children. But most importantly, crucially, more than ever today, they were Kiwis. Words have consequences. Be careful what you do and what you say. As your mum said, "If you've got nothing nice to say, that's what you should say." And then if you hear it, call it out. We must. And that's at every level. Whether you're joking, having a beer with your friends, whether you're at the rugby club, whether you're at your workplace, whether you're just you and your best mate. Don't let it happen. If hate and division are your stock in trade, educate yourself, change. These weapons are unnecessary. They need to be banned and I believe that they will be. Any panic buying of these weapons by these people, I hope are making a list somewhere. We should have done it with Port Arthur. It worked in Australia. Seeing the world's outpouring, that matters, that gets in. I wish it didn't have to, but seeing our silver fern on the Opera House meant a lot. Seeing our flag on the train station in Amsterdam meant a lot. Anning doesn't represent Australia. Trump doesn't represent the States. But when the media stock in trade is racism, fear and hatred, these things are going to happen. We need to stop voting politicians for self-interest. Politicians who may give you a $20 tax cut, but at what cost to society, to decency, to moral fibre and to our environment? The world's leaders are paying us tributes. Trump, is there anything else I can do? God, where do we start? Stop peddling hate, fear, racism, xenophobia, misogyny. People say we hide free speech with political correctness. I say today, we hide racism and hatred in free speech. This isn't about us and them. This is about you and me.
clarelda.
I totally agree with this submission. And I really, I couldn't figure out what words to say. And so I just looked up a song and it's by Sting and it's called Fragile. I'll read it to you. "If blood will flow when flesh and steel are one, drying in the colour of the evening sun, tomorrow's rain will wash the stains away, but nothing, something in our minds will always stay. Perhaps this final act was meant to clinch lifetime's argument, that nothing comes from violence and nothing ever could for all those born beneath an angry star, lest we forget how fragile we are. On and on the rain will fall, like tears from a star, like tears from a star. And on and on the rain will say how fragile we are, how fragile we are. And on and on the rain will fall, like tears from a star, like tears from a star. And on and on the rain will say how fragile we are, how fragile we are, how fragile we are, how fragile we are."
the Wai.
There's been a few times today that I've nearly started tearing up and seen them come down the side of my face and watching the faces around here. To be honest, the numbness that I've felt since Friday, and unfortunately, I don't know when it's going to disappear, but the numbness, the last time I felt this was actually in 9/11. My wife and I were in southern British Columbia with our little kids, three and a half and one. And next thing, there were jet fighters flying over where we were staying. The road down, just down from us, 400 metres from where we were staying, there were armed guards and military all over the place. We knew that day that something would change forever. It did change forever in the United States. It did change forever in Canada. And to be honest, it did change for our family. Because that was part of the discussion my wife and I had after that. Is it time to move? Is it time to come to New Zealand and come home for me? We weighed up all the factors. We considered the strengths and weaknesses. But what really came out was New Zealand, the safest, greatest little country in the world, at the bottom of the world. What could ever happen in New Zealand? And that's probably been the hardest thing to think about, why our part of the world? The other thing that really shocked me this morning was I see the headline on the front page of the paper. Why should any kids be afraid to go to school? I'm sorry, but why should any kids? Forget the Muslim part. Why should any kids? Nobody should be afraid to go to school. Nobody should be afraid to go to work. Nobody should be afraid to go to church. This is our country. Before I continue, I just want to acknowledge the unbelievable services, emergency services and first responders do in Christchurch, but also in our city. When you heard the stories about the police, the ambulance, the fire, but also what the hospital personnel went through, the doctors and nurses. How are they coping? How are they moving on? That's what I really struggle with. You know, and I really hope that they are getting the support that they need. And it's a great time for us to treasure the support services we have in our city and to thank them for the services they do. So this is a changing time for our country. It is a changing time for our city, our community and our people. Last Friday, when we looked at the paper, it was a normal day. It was Friday the 15th of March. As councillor O'Malley touched on, everybody knows where they were on 9/11. Everybody knows what they felt. Unfortunately, 15th of March will be marked in our memories, our mental DNA for the rest of our lives. It is going to be part of our country's history and it shouldn't have been. I think the key thing in listening to all the messages, we've all got a different take on it. And we're all deeply saddened and frustrated. And there could be many other words said about it. But New Zealand is still a safe and strong country. I actually believe we are going to be a safer and a stronger country for all those living here.
councillor Alfisa.
Thank you, your worship. This is a wayata composed by Dr Rose Peri of Ngai Tuhoe. And this is a calling for peace, love, care and truth to the universe. I acknowledge firstly the mana penua and the tangata penua of this wautu. Their manaaki tangah and their endless aroha and patience for us to iwi. I acknowledge you, Ma Tua. I acknowledge you for your aroha at Arai Tiore, for your gentleness, but your firmness in saying, in translating hiata's words, which were all intereo. We need to learn our New Zealand history because this is not the acts of terror. We're not the first in this country. The killing of 40 women and children. The invasion and destruction and rape of pillage and haripata also happened. And so without us acknowledging that, not to dwell on guilt or shame or any of that stuff, but to make sure it never happens again, we need to know, we need to know. I want to acknowledge you, your worship, for your leadership and your efforts to bring us together so that we can actually make some changes, some desperately needed changes. I want to acknowledge my brother Michael because he worked really hard in this space to open access up to people who were not mainstream pakeha, access to the services and decision-making processes. And there was a time, he worked here for 10 years and there was a time when he had had enough. He talked about being in the lift, you know, in the civic centre and witnessing people casually ripping down Maori language week posters. And he had had it up to here in terms of dealing with the casual racism that he heard around the civic centre. And we said, "No, sorry, Michael, you cannot leave because you've started this work to open up access for Maori and Pasifika and other peoples of colour." So I just want to acknowledge him because he was, you know, when Dunedin decided to become a Dunedin refugee settlement centre, he was working hard. And sometimes I think he got sick because he was always working up to, maybe not all the time, but I think his workload was 16 hours a week. I also want to acknowledge my elder brother, Paul Goley. We've known each other for decades and we have, like brothers and sisters, we fight. And so I've said, I said a couple of years ago, "What the hell are you doing being a Muslim? If you were meant to be a Muslim, you would have been born over there, not here in Otaite Hui in Christchurch." But I said to him last night, I said, "I finally understand why you're a Muslim because this is the role from here on and you're going to make some changes. You're going to be part of making the changes with us." So I don't often go on Facebook. I just usually just share and like stuff and send hearts and stuff. But I've been moved to make some statements because I can see that people, people are in grief mode and shocked and what have you, and they're rallying around our Muslim whanau as they should. But when the work goes on and if we're serious about making sure this never, ever happens again, we have to make a whole lot of changes in ourselves. We have to be the change we want to see in the world. So people have talked about hating on that guy, Brenton Tarrant. And I've said, "Hate was in that individual long before he came to Oteporti Dunedin." And hatred lives in our institutions and in our legislation and in our policy makers when we make decisions without true reference to the history of this country and what we need to, we just perpetuate injustice and inequality. And justice delayed is justice denied. So, and I said, you know, it's there behind the closed doors and people make racist, casually racist comments all the time when they think there's no one listening. It's also in the racist abuse and name-calling of young pakeha women and men who are, who come to the city, who are not raised here, and they abuse our Maori and Pasifika young people in the nightclubs or on the streets. But it's only our young Maori and Pasifika people who end up in court because they respond physically. No one calls them out on the hate speech of racist name-calling. So it's got to be at all levels. It's got to be at all levels and I hope it is. I also noted on Facebook discussions, people were surprised that Piers Morgan was calling out Senator Anning on his statements. And I said, "Well, I posted and I said, 'Well, before Friday, March 15th, I've been reading up and watching lots of YouTube videos on leaving their little land, a documentary made by two men claiming that Michael Jackson abused them for years.'" And for me, they're all connected because the mainstream media, the global media has deliberately obfuscated, in my opinion, obfuscated the facts of Michael Jackson's cases. And if you look at now what's happening to R. Kelly, if you look at now what's happened to Bill Cosby, whether they're innocent or guilty, what I am saying is there has been no mention or talking of Elvis Presley dating a 14-year-old. There's been no talk of Woody Allen. There's been no talk of Harvey Weinstein and there's been no talk of Kevin Spacey. So I'm saying, the pictures that are going on here is subtle. It's subtle. And we need to call out our media journalists here because they are always fuelling hate and division. So I hope that we're not just going to point the finger at Brenton Tarrant. We need to look at ourselves and our institutions. And wherever we are, we need to try and make different decisions and understand that our legislation is institutionally violent and racist. Koda.
councillor Vandevos.
I don't believe it's possible for us to conceive of the unthinkable loss of families that have survived. It's the survivors that have lost everything, their connections, their sense of community. Their entire community has been utterly devastated. It's the survivors that really need our support. It's the survivors that will take this kind of... We should still try, however, to identify with what it would be like to lose your entire family in such a horrific way and to lose your family because essentially of the religion that you hold or that you were born into. Ne'akal, I think, has very rightly said, and I, and I think we need to remind ourselves that this action, this horror, has been the action of one lone sick individual. Someone said to me at the vigil the other night that our innocence is lost. And I think as New Zealanders, we like to imagine that we have been innocent and clean and green and everything else. But actually, our memories are a bit short. Council LaFisa has reminded us of some issues. It's not that long ago we had Aramawana, again, another actions of a one lone sick individual. We go back to the Second World War and the 40 Japanese that were killed at Featherstone. Murdered is the word, actually. We have a veneer of being nice people, reasonable people, devoid of any racist, sexist or ageist leanings, but the fact is, we all have them. We're all ingrained with it. When you see someone for the first second, your mind registers their race, their sex and their age. It's what we do with that afterwards, it's what our culture restrains us from in terms of very ancient tribal leanings that we need to look at, I think. Our innocence is gone, but was it really real in the first place? We are not separate from the tribalism, racism and terrorism, and now the technology that makes it possible for one madman to commit such an enormous atrocity. Guns, I hear, we've got to get rid of guns. But if not guns, it can be trucks or it could be planes. Technology brings us all closer together, all of us closer together, including the occasional sick lone individual. Around the table have been many calls for action, calls for changes, and the guns one has been suggested. But I think we need to not have an emotional knee-jerk reaction to changes. I think we need to look at much more reasoned and long-term ideas for actions that will be truly useful, not actions that will just address this particular situation. Some people are looking to the law, saying we have to change our justice system, that it's not delivering justice. I'm reminded of Professor Guest, who used to be Dean of the Law Faculty, who once said that the law is not there to guarantee justice, it is just there to prevent chaos. Don't expect too much from the law. Don't expect too much from tighter gun legislation. What we need to expect from ourselves is to be more vigilant at a community level, to keep a better eye on each other, to look over the fence at our perhaps strange or paranoid or loony neighbours and see what we might be able to do actually personally for them. The actions of one lone sick individual do not mark our society. They simply remind us that we are part of the international world. And if we fancy that we can somehow be a part because we're physically distant, we're kidding ourselves. The kindness that has been called for at government level is a kindness which we need to show each other individually. Our own families, our own sphere, especially our own neighbours. The world is becoming a much smaller place through technology, through social media. Let's make it a much cosier and kinder place by reaching out to our immediate neighbours and the people that we know because these are the people that we can actually really do something for. Thank you.
Counselor Benson. Thank you, your worship, and I'd like to acknowledge, first of all, the leadership that you and a number of other colleagues in this room have already displayed around this matter and will continue to provide over the next few weeks as things become even harder when those photos start showing the nature and the detail of the victims of what happened in Christchurch. I also want to take this opportunity of supporting the comments of Council Anewal and acknowledging the extraordinary leadership that our Prime Minister has displayed. Whether a chap could do the same as a moot point, I suspect it's something about being a woman, but that image that we saw a couple of days ago, which has bounced around the world, says more about what we are as a community than anyone will be able to say at this table today or elsewhere. And I also think it's important to acknowledge the direct and instant response that she and her government have made about change gun control. No one would ever think that's going to be easy, but compared with the other challenges around these issues that sit below what happened in Christchurch, that will be the easy part. And I don't think it's a part that many people in this community will resist logically. But it's not, despite what a few people have said in the community and we've sort of heard just now, that government in Christchurch might have been acting alone, but he's not lonely. He wasn't the person or persons who attacked two young women in this community wearing a hijab in Albion Place a couple of weeks ago. You saw that in the paper, I haven't seen any follow-up. He wasn't the craftsman or tradesman who stopped a van outside the mosque on Friday in Christchurch to tell the people outside he was there to celebrate. And he wasn't the people who abused the young women in the Auckland train the other day for their attire. So there are some deep-seated issues of ignorance and stupidity in our community that we need to confront directly. We've heard a lot of people today talk about calling out that stuff, that must be done, and expecting our constabulary and institutions to respond appropriately is part of that. Those changes are going to be the hard ones to put into effect.
Thank you, your worship. My feelings are really hard to express. I've shed quite a few tears, I find it very difficult. And in a way, perhaps the innocence of New Zealanders has been destroyed. I hear plenty of people saying, this isn't us, this isn't New Zealand. And I feel shame for supporting strongly New Zealand and Dunedin to be a safe city for Syrian immigrants because actually we have failed. And perhaps the thing that has stood out most to me is that it has generated a reflection in me. And I've heard from other councillors here today that our society, even though we, we thought we were in, we live in paradise and that we were a society that was caring, we're not. And I think so many little things happen that are racist in this country that we don't react to. And I personally have a friend who regularly makes racist comments and I don't call him out. I don't like it, but I don't call him out. So I feel guilty for that because I think, as has been expressed today, it's those little things, those little continuous innuendos that in the end make us not realise that our society is changing. And it gives a platform for the hatred that result in what we have seen and what has destroyed the innocence of New Zealand. So I feel really, really quite sad. And I can't imagine the pain that the families who are affected by this are feeling. It's not something that we can understand, but it is something that we can try to come to terms with and think seriously in our own lives, what we could do, the little things we could do to try and drive this behaviour out of our society.
Anyone else like to speak? Can I just use my right of reply to acknowledge the sentiments that have been expressed around the table? I can't, can't find it in myself to disagree with any of them, really. They are from different perspectives, different truths, and some very perceptive comments have been made. As well as looking out at the horror that's outside us, we need to be looking inside. I think that's a good deal of what's come from what's around the table. Can I just finally acknowledge the huge number of messages and support messages mostly from all over the world, from what we might think of as quite impersonal organisations like the Commonwealth Local Government Forum and the United Cities and Local Government. I've had some absolutely touching, quite heart-wrenching messages from what we think of as big bureaucratic organisations, but they're driven by people and they have extended their sympathy. And finally, can I acknowledge the enormous amount of work that is going on by our staff, particularly Joy, Joy Gunn, is doing an absolutely stunning job organising what's still going on in the community and our vigil for Thursday night, and all of the people that are contributing to that from around the community, the Interfaith Council, the Multi-Ethnet Council, our Muslim Brothers and Sisters, police. There's been an absolutely enormous effort and I want to acknowledge that now. So finally, I will put this resolution. All those in favour, please say aye. Against, are there any abstentions? Then it's passed unanimously, thank you councillors. Now, I note that Paul Gooly up at the back has just put up his hand and asked to speak. I suggested that we had to finish the resolution before anyone outside council could speak to this. But is there anyone who objects to Mr Gooly making a statement? Paul, would you like to, would you like to come up here because there's a microphone here?
The reason that I've asked to stand is to thank you, all of you collectively and individually. We are very conscious that we're the ones that, as you constantly say, that we're the ones that have taken the brunt and the hit. We'd like to correct you, you have taken the brunt and the hit. Friday began with me with a suicide and I needed to set that aside while I went out and helped celebrate, watching future leadership showing us a new way of behaving, not a protest. I ran around excited, saying to people, this is not a protest, we need to get the narrative right, this is a peace movement. I was making my way to get ready to go and see my doctor, a good solid Catholic Frenchman. And on my way, a group of strong Buti construction workers came in my direction, came towards me. And whilst I'm not a shy fellow, I was wondering what was about to happen. And they wrapped their arms around me to tell me I was going to be all right. And that was when I found out. I was thinking about it and when I got to see my doctor, unusually, his door was open and I could hear him weeping. And when I went in here, he was with his head on the desk crying because he didn't know how to express his feelings. We are really conscious that this is something that's happened to New Zealand. I wanted to stand to acknowledge that now, I want to ask you to do something that I actually believe we do as New Zealanders, and it might sound a little bit harsh. We believe those that have been killed have been martyred. We believe that between now and Judgment Day, God will look after them, that they will have the best of everything that's possible as though they were in heaven. On Judgment Day, on Recompense, they will have to face the Creator in the same way that all of us will. And I ask you to do something that those who have lost family members have done, which even sounds more difficult. We're going to ask you to love the perpetrator, not their actions. We're going to ask you to forget perpetrator's name. We're going to ask you to stop looking at those disgraceful videos. There is nothing healthy in looking at those. There is nothing healthy in putting that in our minds. And there's certainly nothing of any value that would help make our children or our elderly feel comfortable to know that we're looking at those. We need to replace those, those images with those images which we know to be true of New Zealand and of us as Kiwis individually and collectively. Listening to what you spoke about today, those who didn't get up and speak, what you didn't say was certainly still felt. And we heard your silence as much as we heard... I wanted to stand to acknowledge that now. I want to ask you to do something that I actually believe we do as New Zealanders. And it might sound a little bit harsh. We believe those that have been killed have been martyred. We believe that between now and Judgment Day, God will look after them, that they will have the best of everything that's possible as though they were in heaven. On Judgment Day, on recompense, they will have to face the Creator in the same way that all of us will. And I ask you to do something that those who have lost family members have done, which even sounds more difficult. We're going to ask you to love the perpetrator, not their actions. We're going to ask you to forget perpetrator's name. We're going to ask you to stop looking at those disgraceful videos. There is nothing healthy in looking at those. There is nothing healthy in putting that in our minds. And there's certainly nothing of any value that would help make our children or our elderly feel comfortable to know that we're looking at those. We need to replace those images with those images which we know to be true of New Zealand and of us as Kiwis individually and collectively. Listening to what you spoke about today, those who didn't get up and speak, what you didn't say was certainly still felt. And we heard your silence as much as we heard what was said. And the expression of that has been overwhelming for all of us. We don't want to go back to where we were. It was in the Islam community and elsewhere, I've heard people saying, perhaps if I hadn't spent so much time with my social media and on my cellphone and being busy at work or running around thinking that I was achieving something, we might have picked up that young person before their hatred was able to turn into what it did. So, again, thank you for who you are. And right now, I know all of you and your staff. And I'm glad to hear that Joy has been mentioned. Joy said to me earlier today, you're not necessarily going to be happy with what I'm doing. I'm feeling like I've got to bully you to understand something. We need to change the narrative around that woman and throw our kuruai on her. She doesn't bully. She is firm. She's definitely firm. She's very clear. And I think that to a person, we know that we're lucky to have her. Her correcting is clear, simple, and sincere. And I think we need to remind her, she might be a tanifa, a dragon, but a much-loved one. And the reason that I've asked Sister and the Brother to be here is that, as has been expressed before, irrespective of our faith, we all have a spirituality. That's who we are as Kiwis. The Sister here is very reluctant to be seen publicly in terms of any accolades or anything. But as we know, she's the face of our sisters at the moment. And we're going to ask our sisters, normally we would ask them to divert their eyes and if somebody speaks to them, but the time has come in New Zealand now where we as Muslims have to show our Islam, our peace. And that means that when somebody acknowledges one of our sisters, we're going to ask them to speak back so that we can lift that quietness. I've recently heard, help me with this. Paratataki. There's a pakataki that I like, if I can say this. It says, "When it's good for Maori, it's good for the Mautu." Yeah? When it's good for Maori, it's good for the Mautu. That means when it's good for the nature, when it's good for the people, it's good for all. Understand Kiwis. If it's appropriate, but often I've seen you just in our national anthem.
And I wonder if the Waara Group will...
We will now sing together the national anthem.
Oh, see, I give up, I'll perish. God has put breath in my lungs. Kia ora.
That we kept the Waara Group here for that. Thank you. Kia ora. That is the end of this extraordinary council meeting. The committee meetings will start in about a quarter of an hour. We just need to have time, I suspect, to compose ourselves, but also to get the cameras through to the Edinburgh Room. So, I call this meeting to close. Kia ora.